I'm gonna make sure I'm recording. We are now recording, so I hope you want to have your, your screen on, your video on, so we can all see you. It's nice to see smiling faces and share that connection. However, if you're uncomfortable with that, don't worry, you can have it off. And also, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphone. And if you do have your camera on, we ask that you're in a stationary position. If you want to exercise, walk around, or do something else, or possibly eat, go ahead and turn your camera off. And if you do want to join the conversation, you can utilize the chat function. You can raise your virtual hand. Sometimes if you raise your real hand, we'll see it, but the virtual hand works a little easier for us to see. And our ground rules, we have these so we can create a safe space to learn, share, and grow. So I sometimes go a little too fast, and I want everybody to take a deep breath and take a moment to really listen.
You're muted, Sally.
Have I been muted this whole time?
No, it just muted momentarily.
Oh, good.
You missed a sentence.
Great, thanks, Renee. Okay, so whatever I just said, I was thinking that we, I would like you to take a moment to really listen to, to these and incorporate them in your life. I know I go really fast sometimes, so take a breath and incorporate these into your daily life. So open-mindedness, listen to all points of view and be curious. Acceptance, suspend judgment as best you can. Respect, seek to understand rather than to persuade or convert. Discovery, question old assumptions, look for new insights. Bravity, go for honesty and depth, but don't go on and on. Sincerity, speak only for yourself about what has personal meaning. And these were adapted from the Conversation Cafe. So our objectives with our courageous conversations are to discuss systemic oppression, create an awareness of our local history with racism and other forms of prejudice, expand our circle of knowledge, create community accountability, network with people who are different than us, share and spread new ideas, generate a community of caring and mutual respect, and give us courage. All right, so now I get to introduce David West. We have the honor of having him here with us today. He's an enrolled member and elder of the Citizen Potawatomi Nation, and he's a dear, dear friend. He's the Director Emeritus of Native American Studies at Southern Oregon University, and also the Conaway-Niqta-Tillikum Summer Native Youth Academy. I think I just said that all, usually trip up. David has a real gift for sharing his heart and his wisdom, and also a gift for opening the hearts of people who listen. So in this picture, David is holding one of his favorite books. It's Braiding Sweetgrass by Robin Wall Kimmerer. And I encourage you all to read it. It's a great time to do so with all that rain outside, maybe a fire inside. And when David and I were talking right before this, we started this event, I thought, you know, I think this might be a good book to buy as a gift and give to my family. So you might consider doing that also. Let's see here. So this map, it's such a beautiful map. I especially like it because it shows the overlap of indigenous people, and it does not have artificial borders. And zooming in a little bit to our area, I also have the honor of acknowledging the land we are living on, land that has been cared for by indigenous people, including the Takelma and Cow Creek Umpqua, and many other recognized and unrecognized nations. These people who have lived here since time out of mind are connected to this land and live in balance with this land as if it were their own body. As our elders like Grandma Aggie and David teach us, water is life. The earth is a body, and the rivers are its blood. And our survival depends on taking care of this earth ourselves and each other. Remember each day you wake up to thank water, to work towards dismantling oppression, and to stay connected. So now, Artisteen, I think you have a few words you want to share before David begins.
Yes, yes, I do. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. As, as has been part of our objective in having courageous conversations, this conversation, I think, is particularly, will be particularly challenging for, for some of us because of the preconceived notions and ideas that we have been taught since childhood about Thanksgiving. I remember my children going to school and having to bring these little outfits with the Indians and the feathers. And so we have many, many ideas. I think that we will be, that will be challenged today with David's talk. But I just want to encourage us to, as Sally said before, to be open to hearing the story of Thanksgiving from a different perspective, to, to really look, look at it, turn it around upside down, and, and hear it and experience it from a different perspective. So with that in mind, I invite David to lead us in our conversation this morning.
Thank you, and good morning to each one. It's my pleasure to be here with you today. I am Wabash Kibonish Tijir Danan Undax Klich. I'm from the Anishinaabe, Anishinaabe people. Boreda Watame, Kankakee Wabash Pish. From the area of the Great Lakes and the Wabash and Kankakee rivers. I'm Anishinaabe by nation, or Algonquin, which is our language group. And I'm descended from Citizen Band Potawatomi, Miami, and Kickapoo peoples on my native side, and Dutch and French on my non-native side. I am the American experience all rolled into one. I'm a third-generation Oregonian, and I've spent my life researching history about Native American people and their place in history that for large part has been not included in the history of our nation or in the progress of the development of our nation. So I have some dates and some text and things to share with you, and they may indeed make you uncomfortable. And I hope that they do, because it leads to conversation. These, most of these statistics and this data are not included in the previous curriculums in public school systems, colleges, or universities across the nation, even in history programs and universities. It's sadly lacking history, and it has progressed from the time that I'm talking about in the starting time until right now. Native American people make up 1% of the total population of the nation, and we have a very small voice. But our voice is the inherent and indigenous, the endemic voice of this continent. We are tied to it by umbilical cord relationship, being that our ancestors were born, lived, and died, and returned to the Mother Earth on this land from time out of mind. We have our own genesis and creation stories about our lives as indigenous people and the gift of life that was given to us and the requirements to live that life in a right and proper way. Those are all reflected in Thanksgiving about living your life in a right and proper way and being thankful for the things that you have, having a relationship with the earth and the beings that inhabit this beautiful creation with us. So I'm gonna share some history, and then we'll talk a little bit and see where we can take it from here as we go in today. Is that good with everyone? Okay, good. In around 1605, the first ships of Puritans arrived in North America. During that period of time, they landed in the areas along the Massachusetts and Rhode Island shorelines, particularly at a village called Patoxet. And in that village of Patoxet lived a man named Tusquantum, or Squanto, as he became known in later years. He was taken by the English as a slave along with other members of his tribe from the village of Patoxet. They belonged to the Wampanoag nation. And they were transported there for many years as slaves. Tusquantum returned in around 1614 to America and spoke fluent English. He survived his slavery there and was, the people in 1621, who had landed in the area, were very amazed to find an American Indian, an indigenous person, a native, running around speaking fluent English. They were completely shocked by that. They became friendly with Tusquantum. And along with a fellow tribal member named Massasoit, they became friends with the early Puritans and pilgrims and taught them how to survive because they were starving by not knowing how to grow their crops, not knowing the proper times of the years of the year to plant their crops, when to harvest, and how to proceed. The Wampanoag story is that Tusquantum made his garden on one side of a river, and the Puritans made their garden on the other side of the river. And he taught them how to plant, he taught them how to fertilize, he taught them how to take care of the weeds, he taught them how to plant the three sisters of corn, beans, and squash that is still planted today in that order, and how to honor the life-giving forces of the earth that produced the food that all were to eat. So in 1621, as close as we can tell historically, the first Thanksgiving was held with the Wampanoag people to honor Tusquantum for that act of friendship and decency in teaching the people how to live in this country that they were new to. Unfortunately, within about a 10-year period, Tusquantum also negotiated a peace treaty between the Wampanoag people and the colonists. That would have been the first treaty ever devised or made around 1621, just before the Thanksgiving event. It was a very good event from all accounts, and the problem arising is that the colonial governor of the Massachusetts colony didn't realize how huge the kinship relationship ran amongst native people. So when Tusquantum and Massasoit were invited to share this feast, the colonists didn't realize that they were going to show up with about 350 people that were all relatives, 70 of whom were Tusquantum's family and relatives. They were very short of food, so the Indian people are reported to have been sent back to their villages to gather food, and they brought enough food to share with everybody, and they celebrated for three days. Unfortunately, as more people came from England and from Holland, the friendship deteriorated. It deteriorated in part by the quest for more land for combined usage and depletion of resources that the Indian people counted on themselves to live on, and they began to have fights and battles. Unfortunately, during this period of time, from around 1621 to around 1637, the colonists engaged in the gathering of slaves and indigent and shipping them back to England. The first instances of slavery in this continent were on the indigenous people. Most people don't know that. But it was slavery in Europe and in England primarily. Sometimes as many as 500 slaves would be taken per ship back to England. These are all recorded in documents and shipping records of the time. During this period of time, this also, these acts, the Pequot people did not share in the treaty that the Wampanoags had created with the colonists. And as more and more incursions into the Pequot peoples' area that they lived, more and more battles came into effect, and unfortunately, around 1637, it kind of reached a very big head in that near Groton, Connecticut. 700 men, women, and children were gathered for a green corn festival of the Pequot people, which became our Thanksgiving time. The green corn festival time was and is the Thanksgiving time originally. Unfortunately, English and Dutch mercenaries attacked the camp in the early morning hours and killed all 700 people. They shot and clubbed the men and boys, and they unfortunately moved all of the women and children and the elderly into their longhouse and burned them alive in their longhouse. In the days following this, the Massachusetts Bay Colony Governor established a day of Thanksgiving on the vanquishing of the savages. This is our first, our second recorded Thanksgiving declaration, where the Indian people were not invited to participate in that, and I doubt had very good feelings about a day of Thanksgiving upon their demise. The Massachusetts Bay Colony and the Plymouth Colony actually moved into areas when Squanto returned around 1614 to America. He found his village, his Patoxet village, was completely empty with bones lying about the grounds. There had been a smallpox epidemic that wiped out the majority of the tribe of the Wampanoag and left them very desolate. They have, however, survived and are alive and well today. The attacks on the villages continued for a number of years and continued capturing slaves. Boys and girls over 14 years old were captured and taken to England. Many adults were killed and scalped for bounty to ensure that the Indians were being removed from where they wanted to be, where they wanted to live. A second celebration was held by the colonists on a major attack at one point where the Indians' heads were hacked off and kicked through the streets like soccer balls. And the chief of the, of the Pequot people was beheaded and his head impaled on a pole in Plymouth, Massachusetts for 24 years. This is all, all of this is documented history, and you may check its validity at your own convenience. George Washington suggested that instead of after every victory, a day of Thanksgiving being held, that it be only one celebration a year. And it still was dedicated to the vanquishing of the savages, meaning the killing of the Indian people. Abraham Lincoln declared a national holiday of Thanksgiving in the middle of the Civil War on the same day that he ordered federal troops against the starving Dakota people of in and around Mankato, Minnesota, which resulted in the tracking down and arresting of 380-some people, but resulted in the mass hanging of 38 plus two in Mankato, Minnesota on Christmas Eve, on the date that this was shared. The reason that it's called the 38 plus two is because the militia of the area around Mankato, Minnesota were not happy that President Lincoln had commuted the death sentences of the entire 380-plus people, including women and children and elders, and left the 38 warriors that had been primary combatants in the fight to get food because their agents had been withholding food from them, and they were indeed starving to death. And were told that if they were hungry, they should eat grass. This is also a documented event. But the militia was not happy with being trimmed down to 38, so they went into the crowd and got and captured two Indian people in the crowd of onlookers, took them and hung them with the other 38 to make it an even quarter. There are still numbers of, there's a trail ride that follows the route that the Dakota people were forced to walk to their hanging at Mankato. It's the largest mass execution in United States history on Christmas Eve. All these things around Thanksgiving and the development of the nation and how you give thanks for the vanquishing of your enemies is a mix of both history and myth, but primarily from the colonist's side. And our side looks at it in a much different way. As an example, in 1623, in a written sermon on Thanksgiving by Mather the Elder, he gave thanks to God for destroying, and I quote, chiefly young men and children, the very seeds of increase, thus clearing the forests to make way for better growth, where he was speaking about a smallpox epidemic that had wiped out, wiped out the Wampanoags who had been their benefactors in the first place. Days of Thanksgiving have been observed all over the world for thousands of years amongst many, many, many cultures. The native people, the Algonquin people, had six major days of Thanksgiving each year. Those began with the, in February, the first major observation was the maple dance, giving thanks to the Creator for the maple tree as seen as the tree of life and for its life-giving syrup that was made from, and still is made from the sap of the maple tree. The second was held in the early spring, and it was the planting feast wherein the elder woman of the tribe would speak with the spirits of the three sisters, corn, beans, and squash, when they had given their permission that the breast of Mother Earth could be open in order to commence their planting, is when their gardens were created and were planted. During that time, it was also a ceremony as well as a feast. In the springtime, then, came the strawberry or odomin festival. Odomin translates to mean heart berry. That was our word for strawberry, and it's one of our greatest medicines in the pharmacopeia of the Medewann Grand Medicine Society of the Great Lakes People, one of the oldest pharmacopias in the world. And the Medewann ranks the efficacy of the plants and medicines by their strength and reliability and their efficacy in treating disease. And there are thousands and thousands of them. The odomin, the heart berry, strawberry occupies the sixth place on the list of the pharmacopeia of the Great Lakes People. The modern-day pharmacopeia of medicines, over three-quarters of that document are gathered from the knowledge of North, Central, and South American indigenous peoples. That also is a medical fact. The next festival would be held in the summertime, and that was the late summer, early winter, right about this time, and that was the Green Corn Festival. The next would be in the fall time, that was the Harvest Festival, which actually has become now, the Harvest Festival has become our Thanksgiving time. And with the Winter Festival, thanking the Creator for all the foods of the year and in the survivability of the winter. So there's just some of the background and some of the historical perspective of this period of time. And I know that it's difficult for people to hear it. It's incredibly difficult when you're asked to go to a preschool or a second or third grade class and try to explain to young people who have been raised with the concept of our modern-day Thanksgiving and have to try to find a way to tell this truth from our perspective. The Wampanoag people are not a disappeared people. They are still alive today in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, even though a very great effort was extended to eliminate them and the Pequot people. They have, many of them have black heritage as well because they were on the northern end of the Underground Railroad and accepted and hid slaves that were running from slavery in the South because they remembered their people's stories about their history of slavery in England and amongst the colonists. Where do we make transition? I am hopeful that by this very thing of education, of what we're doing here and being allowed to present this in a documented educational way is primary because as a people, the indigenous people of North America, in order for us to heal, our story has to be told. It has to be recognized, it has to be dealt with, as uncomfortable as it might be. And responsibility has to be taken for the things that were done to the Indian people relative to the major attempts at conversion to faiths beyond their own and the consequences for not adhering to that conversion. It made it very difficult for the Indian people to believe in what they were being told by the carriers of the Black Book because their actions did not match the words and the teachings in their Black Book. And so it became a reluctance to convert, a reluctance to participate because of the historical background. That history remains very much unchanged to the current time. It's only just in the last eight years that we have a mandate from the State Department of Education that we include the history of the indigenous people of the Americas accurately and from the perspective of the indigenous people with whom we are talking about so that it matches their history, not a history supposedly written by the conqueror. We are not a conquered people by definition of the International Council on War and wartime Activities. We are a defeated people because we signed peace treaties that had provisions for our surrender. A conquered people have no peace treaties and have no provisions for aftermath of the wars. We don't consider ourselves a conquered people. For the Wampanoags and the Pequots and many other people, unfortunately, Thanksgiving has come to be seen as a time of mourning. And that time of mourning is, that's difficult for us too. It's a shared difficulty, it's a shared heartache, it's a shared remorse, and it is traumatic memory that is, has within it the impacts of impotent rage of social withdrawal. And by then being relegated over the rest of the period And by then being relegated over the rest of the period of history from the sixteen hundreds till now. And we look at the. Land base of indigenous peoples. There are creation stories all. In all my research in the tribes in North America and Canada. And Alaska, the northern tier peoples and as much as I've been able to in South America. Actually, Central America. All of the creation stories at some point have an admonition from the Creator, Life Maker, Breath Giver. That we were given life to be good stewards to the land. And to continue to have communion with the plants, the four leggeds. The swimmers, the flyers, the crawlers, the standalones. And to have that relationship and to be protectors, good stewards. For that land and to be thankful and to give thanks for those foods that sustain us. To be thankful every day for the water, to get up and greet the morning and the new day with a drink of water. I'll do so right now. That means thank you to the water. We're ninety some percent water when we're born, we're eighty percent something water. As we grow throughout our lifetime and we're close to seventy, seventy-five percent water as we age. I'm getting up around that seventy-five percent water here. As I'm aging, but. It's my. And long has been my. Hope and dream that we could find a way to move forward. With the history past the history, it's traumatic memory and no one can heal from traumatic memory. Until that memory is acknowledged. And the pain is acknowledged. And how do we do that? So for native people, we begin to make ceremony within our own communities. To remember that we had at least six, if not more, and perhaps every day was a day of Thanksgiving. Not just once a day and certainly not on the vanquishing of our enemies. But to, for us as a people, to perhaps teach again. The meaning and the value of Thanksgiving in relationship to. Everything else that lives, we're part of an incredible creation of which we're only a part and. We, the native people never did and still have trouble with the aspect of dominion over nature. I haven't met anybody yet that can run out there and stop this big wind from blowing right now. Jump out in front of a flood and say, stop and stop that flood. I haven't met anybody yet that's able to do that. How do we move forward? How do we open this discussion? How do we open this discussion in communities of faith? As you go to speak to your people. That count on you for your leadership, for your ability to seek truth and expression. How do we all do that together? How do we create community? As a people, we didn't exist without cooperation. And in order to have. A solid community, you have to have cooperation within that community, not separateness in that community. And right now our country is separated in so many different facets and so many different ways. And I truly believe that it's the faith community that can lead us forward as well as the education community. And those that are willing to participate and share their voice. And at this point, I would like to stop here and ask if there's any questions or comments, your viewpoints. Your takes on what I've just shared with you and we'll see where we go from there.
Hi, I'm Bucky. Thank you so much for this incredible detailing of important traumas and past histories. How do you see sir to share with our children? Because they're, they're, yes, I'm, I need to know this, yes, I need to take action, but our children are our future. And do you have suggestions there, please? Thank you.
I think we have to just tell them the truth. As difficult as it may be, we can't hide it anymore. It can't be behind the blinders. It can't remain in the state of part of the oppression of indigenous people. It can't remain there and our old people, our elders tell us it is amongst the children. We have started it with this history background and we take it up to now. And what are our people doing to survive right now? What do we need to reinstate? I told Sally that I have a model amongst the Menominee people of Wisconsin. I go there for ceremonies, I have family in Wisconsin, Minnesota and Michigan. My families are from the east side of Lake Michigan, almost directly across from Chicago. Down into the northern parts of Illinois and Indiana and around the area of Green Bay, Wisconsin. And the Menominee people have been fighting an open pit terrorist zinc oxide mine. That was proposed to be dug on what was their original village site. And the site of their creation. When I went there three years ago to tour this site, we were rolling along and my brother said. You see those round top mounds out there? I said, yes, and he said, you see these other ones that on that side and over on this side that are square topped and rectangular in shape? I said, yes. He said, the round topped mounds are burial mounds. The rectangular shaped mounds are raised garden beds. He said, the reason that we as a people, the Menominee people, the reason that we don't have big warrior society stories. Or big war stories like our relatives on the high plains. And even in the east and. Around our area, the reason we didn't have so much war and conflict is because from the beginning of our time. We were guided to this place to live after our creation by the Creator telling us you go to a place where food grows upon the water. And that will be your place. Menomon is the Algonquin word for wild rice. And so they found a place where the wild rice was growing on the water, which was Lake Michigan. And they became the people of the wild rice, the Menominee. I said, how did you guys survive all of that time and you didn't have work for you to, he said, we traded. He said, because we were a people who had a cooperative society. Our entire society was based in cooperation and that everyone participated. No one was above anyone, even our sessions, our word for leader. Were picked for their ability to lead with generosity and kindness. Not through power or strength, but for their attributes that contributed to the well being of all the people. And he said, we started something here with our protest against this mine. And that we started with our young people, with our children. We told them the truth of what had happened to us in our removals from Michigan to here in Wisconsin. And we started a program called Miniconicum and it means in their language, community rebuilders. And so they started learning their language, they started planting crops. They started raising buffalo, they gotta get donation. They got a donation of land from a farmer who returned his land, he had no heirs and he returned his. A two hundred and eighty acre farm to the Menominee tribe and they built a youth complex on it. And a longhouse, their medicine society longhouse, they have two different gardens, a community garden for food. And a community garden for healing herbs and medicines. And their young people are relearning that relationship with the earth around them. I think that's a beginning place and where did these foods come from that we eat? Where is the turkey? Is it in just in the store or is it raised on the turkey farm or does it live in the woods? Originally, the turkeys lived in the woods and it was one of our most sacred birds because wild turkeys are smart. Domestic turkeys, sorry, not quite so much, but wild turkeys are incredibly smart and adept at survival. And was one of our major foods, sweet potatoes, yams. Cranberries, both high and low bush cranberries. Onions, garlic, corn, squash, beans, on and on. The things that were gathered, the roots that were dug in the forest to make tea, sassafras. The things that were used for seasoning for the feasts and we ate well. When I asked them, how old were the starvation stories amongst their people? The Menominee people replied to me that the starvation stories were only in the minds of their very, very oldest elders. Because they had been living in a place of abundance for many, many hundreds and thousands of years. I think it has to start with the truth, how you can't sugarcoat it. It's difficult and I don't have exactly all the ways for each person because each family's different. You know your own children, you know how you could possibly infuse the conversation into these foods, where did they come from? With an acknowledgement of Squanto and the Wampanoag people. And how history went sideways and these people did some terrible things to this Indian people down through time. And now we're working at how to give back. Our own selves and our own communities to the spirit of that first Thanksgiving. That Squanto taught the people how to live and they appreciated it enough that they gave a feast in his honor. That's how I did it with my family.
David, I've heard many numbers and figures of how many indigenous people were here. When the colonists arrived, can you give me a idea?
There are, there's so much new archaeological and anthropological evidence. That keeps surfacing all the time, right here in Oregon, we have one of the oldest recorded living sites in North America. And it's at Fort Rock over by Paisley Christmas Valley. Summer Lake, Silver Lake area of La Pline. There have been. Moccasins or shoes made out of greasewood and sage. That are carbon dated at fourteen thousand plus years old, there's also human scat. What are those called? Carpullets that were found in the. At Fort Rock and were dated to almost sixteen thousand years. Just recently, there were seeds discovered in the tombs of the pharaohs that are tobacco seeds. That are traced genetically back to the Old Mack civilization in Central America. That tobacco had to get traded somehow to Egypt to get into those tombs. That shows a very, very early on trade system that was occurred. Many of the west coast native people believe that it was the Chinese who first made landfall in North America. Many, many hundreds of years before anybody else. Current estimates range anywhere from a hundred and fifty million to two hundred million, but we have to factor into that. That there were at least three major pandemics. In North America because introduced disease in North America was the killer. Of the largest number of the Indian people, both in Central America, South America and North America. Entire regions of North America, including the southeast and Coronado. Were eliminated by disease, smallpox. Venereal diseases, measles, mumps, influenza. We had no medicines to treat those, our medicine people didn't know how to treat them and we were highly susceptible to them because we had no immunity to them. In our systems. So we've gone down from a very large number of people in most areas historically. It's been found that there was a living or camping staying site every one hundred miles. And many campsites across the nation, up and down, back and forth across. Were within a day or two days travel. All across the nation, the traces in the east that ran from Canada all the way to the Gulf of Mexico. The traces that came clear across. The Indian people knew about those passes that Lewis and Clark came over way long time before those guys got there. They'd been trading back and forth for thousands of years. We find DNA remnants of salmon taken from the Salillo Falls area on the Columbia. In the area of Lake Erie and they had their own Atlantic salmon, but these are, this DNA is from Pacific salmon. That could have only come to that part of the area by trade. And the Columbia River, Salillo Falls was one of the major trading points in North America for many thousands of years. It's now behind the Dallas Dam. And buried. So that's, that's about as close as I have right now to answer your question.
David, just hello, it's great to see you again and hear you. David and I go back forty-five or so years, we began an educational journey at Rogue Community College. And I want to express my thanks for you adding to my education today.
Is that you Greg?
Greg, yeah. You probably have, if you have everybody up on the screen, you have what eighty something people, so. Anyway, it's, it's just a delight to continue to learn from you and I wonder if you could. Tell those of us here today a little bit about the leadership program that you founded at Southern Oregon University, the Conaway Nikathil.
My pride and joy, the best thing that I ever did with my education. And my education started right here on this campus. This part of the campus didn't even exist then. And Greg, along with many others. Were my first teachers. And culminated in my years of being a classroom teacher. As well as having worked for the institution. Doctor Tennyson Haley was an integral man in my life, as was many, many people here and. Greg taught me so much about. Psychology and about working with people. I have a tremendous state of gratitude to all of my teachers for that. When I got to Southern Oregon University, I'd been hired here as the career counselor. By Dr. Haley after I received my master's degree from Alaska and moved back home. I was a crossover faculty in regionalization monies and I'd been the co-director of the diversity task force. And the establishment of the Oregon Diversity Institute during my time here. I was the first crossover faculty in the state and I went to SOU. To begin taking over the coursework for Native American studies there. At that time, it was a minor, a twenty-six credit minor, we took, quickly took it to a thirty-six credit certificate. This year, they're writing for the doctorate with two full doctorates assigned directly to Native American Studies. At SOU, not attached to any other division. Two full doctorates, one is a graduate of SOU and the first McNair scholar from SOU, Native American woman. And the other is Dr. Chance White Eyes. Whose mother is the director of Native American programs at Oregon State University and has been for many years. She and I went to school at the University of Oregon. While I was at the University of Oregon, there was a dear. Friend who I've become part of his family, the Florindo family from the Warm Springs Reservation. His name is James Florindo and he worked with the University of Oregon Office of Multicultural Affairs. And directed the Native American Studies Program at Lane Community College until his retirement. We had a dream that we wanted to do something that would help young native people. Get adequately prepared enough to even get into college or university. Because we had terrible teachers, nobody wanted to work and go teach on Indian reservation. They're all drunks, you know. Killers and. Terrible things. People began to find out that that wasn't so. So we went on, we got our, finished our degrees, we went to work. We went to work and a lady had a dream while she was at an Oregon Indian Education Association Conference in Lincoln City, looking out at the ocean. And her name is Dr. Jean Maxwell. She taught anthropology at SOU for many years. She said that she was sitting there thinking about how can we help young native people get started in a college and university? And it came to her that there were talented and gifted programs in the summer, extended campus youth programs at SOU. When she got back, she contacted me and we went to talk to the director of that program. And we began our development there. We brought every person that we could think of that had anything to do with Indian education in the state of Oregon to SOU with a five thousand dollar grant from the then president Stephen Reno. And we asked three questions, only three. Native wisdom tells us that one question makes three. So we actually had nine questions and the first question was what are the demonstratable recognized needs in your community? What would a program at our institution look like that addressed those issues? And finally, how would we assess its success, its efficacy? We built Conaway from those three suggestions. It's now going into its twenty-seventh year. It's an intercollegiate in residence preparation program in an early intervention to retention program for students K through twelve. So that they can't go to college or university if they don't complete high school. And so we wanted them to complete high school. So we started developing coursework. It's a eight day academy in residence at SOU. We stay in the dormitories. There's coursework from Monday through Thursday. On Friday, our arts director, fine arts director has worked with his students for the week. And we, they do a presentation on the green stage at the Oregon Shakespearean Festival every year on Friday afternoon. We have about a twenty-four year history with Shakespeare. And they've comped us sixty-five tickets to take our young people to see a Shakespearean play every year for that period of time. Ninety percent of our young people, the first ten years of our existence had never been to a Shakespearean play and didn't know who Shakespeare was. We utilized it to tell them Shakespeare was a master storyteller and a writer. He had articulation. He learned his language very well. We urge you to learn your language, to learn English very well, so that we don't get tricked by those English words in future as our ancestors were. Because we're storytellers, you can be as good as storytellers and write books with stories in them. Every bit as good as Shakespeare, just apply yourself. It is possible for you. So now in twenty-seven years and the majority of the student enrollment is forty-five to upwards now of eighty plus from all over the Pacific Northwest, the west coast. We have had students travel from Minnesota, Alaska, Wisconsin and Washington State, Canada. And a couple of years ago, we had students, transfer students from Mexico that were a part of the academy. We have a graduation. They go through a graduation, they receive a certificate of completion. And we encourage them all the way through that they can indeed succeed and represent their people with dignity and with the pride in our descendancy of who we are. And it is by far the best thing I've ever been associated with. The difference in those young people is incredible to watch. It gives them hope. And we're the invisible minority of this country. You don't see us in commercials. You don't see us in sports menus. You don't see us in the news broadcast. You don't see us, you don't see us, you don't see us. The issues of the mascot has been a bit, mascots have been a big one. But again, we're one percent of the population. But we have some grandfather and grandmother rights. We've been here for a very, very long time. As I said, our creation stories give us life here, not somewhere else here. And we adhere to those. There are many, many, many Christian Indians and their faith and their belief is deep. And they still continue to take part and celebrate their own traditional ceremonies, their own relationship with the creator. All the ways that we knew this being, this entity that ultimately was seen as the great mystery. Because it is a great mystery, the place that the creator has in the universe and the relationship that we build through acts like Thanksgiving. Our ceremonies are all based in Thanksgiving. I'm a sociologist and psychologist by academic training. And Native American people, our original tribal societies were seen as finished societies. Now, we didn't have jails and we didn't have mental institutions. We didn't have homes for the elder. We took care of everybody and we've made a place for everyone. So we're trying to work back to that place as well. And I just got the high sign that I got two minutes left. So if there's another quick question, I would try to take it. Well, just let me say thank you, my friends. I hope that this presentation has given you pause for some thought. Encourage you to do some further research on your own and look about you. We're an invisible people. As you look to the people that you work with, try it sometime and ask, how many of you know or believe yourself to be of any amount or degree of Native American heritage? And I'll ask the group right now, raise your hand, any of you, if you believe yourself to be any amount, any amount. Get them up there. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine cousins on this page right here, right now. Tell your children that. Thank you so much for this time. I appreciate it. Sally, thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Fishwick, give that lady a hug for me when you get home.
Thank you so much, David, for joining us today. And just a big thank you from the entire group for taking your time. I wish we had, you know, another hour or two to sit here with you and ask more questions and hear more stories, but.
Hear that Sally? I am working with the president. She called and asked me on two things. We're doing a review of any archaeological items that might be in the archives or anywhere in the institution, both Rogue Community and SOU, working in a combined structure with both presidents of that. And I've been asked to be an ambassador to the two schools, to the state, a Department of Education in that regard and with the nine recognized tribes of Oregon. And with the president here on a statement recognizing the indigenous people that is approved by the tribal people of the area. So it's wonderful to be back in association and doing something positive for change and for growth, and particularly with this place that completely and entirely changed my life to this old guy with a COVID face on that you see here with you today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. I'm gonna share my screen really quick. Just for next month, does that show? December, we are not going to be having a meeting, so we want you to enjoy the holidays. Please keep the conversations going. And then January, we're going to break from our typical Tuesday at noon. We are going to do our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on the holiday. It'll be a Monday evening, pretty sure at six thirty, details to come. Thanks for joining us.
Last thing, I would like to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. Please eat some sweet potatoes for me. Red garnet yams are actually better than sweet potatoes. If you've never tried those and enjoy it and above all things, be thankful.
You're here. Peace, everyone. Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you, Tom.